Starting off, we'll do introductions. We have board member Glenn Koppelman, Board of Alternate. It's going to be Steve Padfield. We have Board Member Peter Coffin. Tonight, the select one who's represented will be Rich Wilson. Myself, Chris Bashar, Vice Chair, filling in and running the Board for Lynn Merrill, who is absent this evening. Are you still a Board Alternate, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, until we get replacements. So, Board Alternate and Administrator of the Planning Board, Ellen Faulkner. Board Member Peter Bickie and Board Member Robin Dugay. Probably joining us soon will be Town Planner Glenn Greenwood. We're gonna s- yeah, we should, Steve should be a voting member tonight, so we'll have Steve Padfield serve as a voting member in absence of Lynn Merrill.
Just a word of caution, he walked out because he was not feeling well, so I don't know what that, I don't know what that means.
He may not return.
He might, well, he's got stuff here, but he was, he was having some, some issues.
Alright. We're gonna start, we're gonna go out of order. We initially had a public hearing scheduled for 6:45, I believe, for the Hawks Ridge of South Kingston. We're gonna go ahead and take that now, due to the fact that we have received correspondence addressed to the Town of Kingston Planning Board, reference Hawks Ridge of South Kingston LLC. This is the application for LCA adjustment and amended site plan, or in quotes, village at Granite Fields condominiums, tax map R3, lot 4, LU4020, Mulligan Way and Bent Grass Circle, Kingston, New Hampshire. We have received a continuance request on behalf of the applicant from Charlie Zilch. Says, "Dear members of the Board, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue the public hearing to the above referenced application to the next available planning board date. Thank you for your consideration."
Do we have any indication of why they're asking for a continuance?
Nothing in my letter.
Well, I know there's nothing in the letter, but I know there might be some discussion about it.
Glenn spoke with Charlie and it's my understanding that there's some negotiation occurring between the applicant and the condo association. That's what Glenn expressed to me.
Yeah, 'cause the documents I sent out to the Board seemed to indicate they were coming to a consensus. So, that looked like they were getting support from the condo association, either by vote or in writing. So, what do we have for...
We have June 21st.
So, entertain a motion to continue this to June 21st as requested?
As requested. June 21st to 6:45?
6:45.
Do we have anything else on it?
Nope.
Nothing yet.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Any on this? Okay, well, that was the only scheduled thing, so this was a great meeting for one to miss. So, in our correspondence file, we're gonna handle, first one we have in the pile is, this is more on the application for a driveway permit. This is the one that I believe was denied by Rich Singleair, and he sent it back to the Board for guidance on this. This is reference 110 Exeter Road, Route 111 in Kingston, New Hampshire. Looks like the property owners were just the divorce.
Chairman, I'm David Butter, the West Side, so I'm recusing myself.
Okay. Steve, we have put you in as a voting member to fill Lynn's vacant seat this evening. Yes, yes, actually, yes, a lot of Ellen vote on this as well to fill Glenn's, while Glenn has refused from this. Did everyone get a copy of this? Does anyone need to see the packet? I know we got some of the stuff in there. I don't believe the sketches were in, I don't believe we got the sketches attached to there so we can pass this around if anyone wants to take a look. I know, I know we do have in a butter, Glenn, I know you're in a butter that there was also a letter in the packet. While they're taking an opportunity to review that sketch, is there anything you'd like to comment on there? Or would you just like me to reference the previous letter that was in the packet, reference that property, the driveway at one point? It looks like it was back from 2010.
Something related to my correspondence from me?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know how much information you all had. Glenn Koppelman, 108 Exeter Road, for the record. The, the ownership of the property has changed since, since that communication from me to the town, and it was really related to the use of an accessory driveway, not the primary driveway, that ran up the lot line, and that portion of the driveway did not meet lot line setbacks, and so I was bringing that to the town's attention.
Okay. So, this is replacing the existing driveway Glenn had there?
Yeah.
That's just redoing the driveway?
So, there's a paved driveway that goes in, and it's hard for me to show you because I don't have the picture, but the driveway goes in off, off of 111. The paved driveway sort of swings, it, it, it's right on the property line, and then it swings away and goes down to a, under, under the house garage. When you first move in the drive, if you, if you stayed on the pavement, you'd swing right. You could go straight as well, and it's a gravel driveway just for accessing the back part of the property. And that's the part that I had an issue with back in 2010, because the property owner at that time was using that driveway extensively and not just for, not just for, you know, going and hating the back field or whatever. So, in this case, and the property owner, the current property owner has, has talked to me, I mean, we've discussed this, and he wanted to make sure that I knew that he was putting forth this request. And I believe that the reason is before you is because he's looking to do more than just putting a top coat on the pavement, it's a reconstruction of the driveway, and I think that's why the code enforcement officer or highway, whoever.
Yeah. And so, for anyone wanting, I mean, the reason it got pushed back to us is the application indicates paving only, and then there is, but it, it sounds like the higher road agent on discussion with them, it looks like it is going to be tearing up, repicking, rebasing material, and it's not just paved up. It's rebuilding the driveway.
So, just, just, I'm just, just to clarify here, is the driveway to the right that's paved? I'm very familiar with the problem.
Yes.
So, my question is, is the driveway that's to the right that's paved, so you and I both know that when they paved that driveway, they scuffed it and they rolled hot top air across the lawn. They did a horrible job, that driveway was never built correctly. It used to be grass and dirt, which, which is why the new owners want. Correct, so that driveway is all like this. It's horrible, say it's just a terrible driveway, they, they went right across the lawn with hot top.
So, it's the, but it is the driveway they have been primarily using.
Correct.
I just, I just, I just don't think, we delegate our authority to the road agent on a lot of the driveway permits. I think in this situation, he felt it was more appropriate for it to come back to the Board to make a decision in this driveway permit application. Just for the record, we have been joined by Glenn Greenwood, our Town Planner.
You have, so, so before I go and sit back down, I mean, my position on, on driveway setbacks, when I sit as a Board Member, has, has been pretty consistent with it. There should be a setback from the lot line. Be consistent with our, our ordinance as a regs. Granted, this is an existing situation, however, it is a rebuilt situation, there is plenty of frontage, so it's, however you choose to go.
That guy, that guy that had that originally done, 'cause I used to live across the street, they had it done really cheap, they went in and they just had it run across the top of the grass, and they rolled hot top across the, it was on.
Was that when they put the new house in?
No, it's not the new house, they cut the roof off and put a second story on. It used to be a ranch, two car garage under, it was a ranch.
Yeah, 2009.
Yeah.
One hundred and seventy-eight.
Correct, so it was, it was always a dirt driveway to the right, and then they just rolled hot top across it. So, they won't, the new one probably just wants to make a right, because their driveway's horrible.
So, is the one, was the accessory part of it another?
That's not the one I'm talking about.
And that, and that, and that was his concerns in 2010, the use of that accessory one.
Right, but this, but this one still is on the, starts at the lot line?
It's approximately 10 feet or...
Starts along, it's right on the lot line, and then it very quickly curves away from the lot.
It's on the right lot line, right?
No, left.
Left.
Have to face left.
Then it's drawing, you see wrong, it's on the left, and it's showing it coming back to the house. It's a lot of on the square.
Let's probably still watch.
If you look over here.
I think this one, yeah.
Well, that children on the left, and it couldn't be, because that can be his house beyond it.
Used to go in.
And that's why I was confused by that sketch.
Sketch is gonna be backwards.
To get back to a bind or something.
So, the Board needs to make a decision on whether or not they feel that the reconstruction of the driveway is going to be appropriate in its current location, or if the Board's gonna demand that it be more conforming to the setback regulations being that it's reconstructed. So, that's the decision the Board needs to make on this, that I believe needs to be made on this application for a driveway permit.
So, this driveway was put in, was it over, or meets the...
That, that always been, it used to be dirt, now it's paved.
Okay, so, that, that part of it wasn't the one you described as being put in of the grass, it's after it clears away from the property. So, the question is, what I'm trying to get to is, this is a pre-existing non-conforming prior to this ordinance going into effect, and it sounds like, when I looked at the property file, I can't even find any part of the background, it said 2003.
1994, when I moved there, that was the driveway.
Okay.
Pam, Pam lived there, it was a ranch, it was a modular house, and it was original driveway, it was dirt, it had grass in the middle of it, we used to pull in and go to the right, there's a two car garage under.
Yeah.
So, it's the same driveway. It used to split, it used to drive up the property line on the left hand side, and that's the one that Glenn didn't want, have continued use, because it's right on the property line.
Yeah.
But where it leaves 111, that entrance has always been right there, and they just rolled hot top across it.
Yeah, so the, so that part could be pre-existing non-conforming.
Where it comes off 111.
The question is, when that driveway was put in, and it would be interesting to know when that, I mean, obviously, he got there in 4.
I could just, well, I, I asked Richard why it was coming to us, and he said that, and I spoke with Chris, that because it was not just being repaved, but because the whole thing was being ripped out and redone all over again, he did not feel it was a pre-existing non-conforming, and that's why it's come to the Board.
That doesn't apply.
But I do want to be clear on the fact that there is a state permit has been issued, and the gentleman, I don't know if it's in there, or whether Richard told me, or the gentleman said it in an email, that the state did indicate, in discussion with the property owner, I don't have anything from the state, but this is what I was told, so I'm just telling the Board, that the state feels that entrance is the safer entrance off of Route 111, and you might know this better than I do, because of some sort of curve or hill.
There's a curve right there, and with the actual direction, it's closer to that corner.
So, I didn't, I felt that I had to tell you what he said, I have no proof about any of that one way or the other, but that's information I've been given.
Yeah, but I think it's both down to, because the state doesn't really care about Kingston's success, and so that's, obviously, they need two permits, and it's, the town is going to determine whether they need to build that. I'm reading the packet, I was under the impression it was just repaving, and that, that was us asking about the, the pre-existing use, but I think it's going to be reconstructed.
Well, that's what, Richard did talk to me about this, so we would know, the reason why he denied it, is because he thought it was just repaving initially, and then when he found out it was basically tearing the whole thing up, that's why he denied it, because, he says if they're redoing the whole thing, then they can move it, because it's not just staying in place, but he, that's the Board's decision, not his.
So, that goes back to the state, is it a safety issue because of that curve?
Kinda goes back on Mill Road that you had a couple weeks ago, that moving that further away from the curb.
I think as far as the town's concerned, the town goes with Richard, it's gotta meet the town's criteria for a driveway, but again, it's a state road, and they're saying, just like we ran into across Presidential Estates, if the state is saying that the safest spot is where it is, to stay real, we probably ought to go with the recommendation of the state, as long as it's built to the Kingston standards of a, of a driveway.
And so, I, so one of my concerns is that, and it could probably be problematic for the town on, is, the town does not, as far as I know, doesn't have its own definition of what a driveway is. And if you go back to the state's definition of a driveway, it states that it's the point of entry to the property regardless of the configuration, once it enters the property. So, it could be considered, if it's, if that's where the point of entry has been, then that would be considered a pre-existing condition, but I don't, I believe the town hasn't adopted its own definition of driveway, and the only one I can find from the state definition regards it is the point of, point of entry regardless of configuration.
And why would I have to get a new permit from the state?
The regulation also doesn't differentiate between construction, reconstruction, or paving, so regardless of whether they were just paving or reconstructing, there's language in here to reflect the difference.
Yeah, I think they still have to get a permit regardless of what they're doing, but the difference with reconstruction is that, like tearing that house, you, if, if the house you took down was, say, 10 feet from the property line, you build a new house, it's gotta be these 20 feet from the property line, because they were building new, so that's...
I don't disagree on principle, but the regulation doesn't...
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree on principle, but if it's, if they're not changing the point of entry, is that considered, since we don't define driveway further?
Yeah, well, the reason why they started to start doing driveway permits on state roads was because the state only cared about the access point.
Yeah.
Sightlines and the culverts, whatever.
Yeah, oh yeah, it doesn't standard to which point of entry.
10 feet in from the road, they don't care anymore. So, that's, that's one of the issues about people getting drivers, with grays too deep or curves too sharp for fire trucks, and that's why we started doing the permits with the town, because the driveway, all the, like the driveway to access the house from the fire trucks.
How, how much of the driveway doesn't meet any type of setback? Glenn, do you have, you, or Peter, do you, I mean, you guys are familiar with the property, so...
Not much.
You mean most of it is 20 feet away, like their point of entry. Do you have an objection to where it is now?
Yeah, I think if you're gonna move that, I think it's close to that corner.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's some sort of compromise between nothing and 20, that would be reasonable.
So, that's, that's why, even if you wanna switch your driveway towards Kingston, because it'd be dangerous towards that corner.
Exactly, so just, you know, if you move it six feet.
That's why his driveway is where it is, by his house. Through that corner, it'd be more dangerous.
I just wondered if it might be, maybe 20 is not reasonable to the safety issues, but, you know, can you move it six to, to give some sort of separation between the properties? I'm just wondering if there's a compromise to...
Well, drops off quite a bit to the right, so I think it's gonna be quite a bit.
I mean, I try around it all the time, but I don't think about that particular access point.
Could we spell out that it could be, you know, 20 feet or the maximum distance away from the property line to maintain the site distance?
Well, I think as a, as a Board, we can, I mean, I think it's, we have the ability to waver it for any, any distance in between zero and, zero and 20 of the, of the recommendation of the regulation, so we do have some flexibility here. I just, you know, obviously, it'd be, it'd be better if everyone can agree on it.
I mean, I just, I didn't know, a compromise, or something, that maybe it can't be 20, but maybe it can be eight, so that there's some separation between property, because it sounds like the driveway itself self-corrects as, as you move down a little bit, so if you could do it a little bit, then, but I don't...
My concern is I would just hate to put an arbitrary number on it.
Yeah.
I don't build driveways.
And the state's gonna come out and do their, their sight visibility test anyway?
They've already done it.
They've already, yeah.
They've already done it.
Okay.
Again, they don't, they don't care anything about our setback, they just say, oh, this is where it was, this is fine, yeah, we're good.
And, and they said that was the safest point of entry to the road.
Well, that's what I've been told, but I don't have that information from the state.
I mean, yeah, according to this, I mean, the state's permit doesn't mention any of that, doesn't indicate any of that stuff. I mean, the state's concern is the standards to which the entrance is built, it doesn't talk about anything, it doesn't mention anything, in this permit anyway, about the line of sight or anything like that.
So, how much of the driveway is within 20 feet? I mean, is it first 10 feet or the first 20, or just... Probably the first 10. And then after that, it's 20 feet away? 10 to, 10 to 15, maybe, something like that.
And then does it angle to initially, to eventually get to 20, is that what happens?
Oh, it angles the grass.
I mean, I go by there all the time, but I don't look at...
This is a great conversation, guys. You're asking all the right questions. I, if, I just wanna say two things, maybe it's really three things. As far as the, the non-con, the legally existing, non-conforming grandfathered aspect, I mean, I, I think that the, the Board should be aware of what the circumstance was over history. I think that's important. Our regulation specifically says, construction or reconstruction of a driveway requires planning board, I mean, requires town approval. So, from my perspective, to just say it's always been there means it can always stay? Isn't really an issue for non-conforming, because the real issue here is safety, and non-conformity, if pitted against safety in the courts, is gonna lose every single time. So, they, so someone can claim that, that they, that they have a non-conforming grandfather use, and that works great for zoning issues, but it really, this really is a different animal when the presiding issue is safety. So, so eliminate how we feel about it always being historically there. It concerns me that we have somebody on record saying the state thinks that this is the safest location.
Well, it's the owner, though, so just saying.
So, I've gotta say, I would prefer we verify it before we really say anything about this driveway. Now, here's the rub, to do that is, makes, takes time, and am I hearing that they've already made these, they've already had somebody out there doing this? No. Oh, so there, so no damage is done here?
I can, if I may, yeah.
Just stay.
I have, I have way too much information on this.
Yeah, I'd say.
According to Mr. Morris, the owner, he has a contract scheduled for, I believe he said July to get the work done. He's like, he's already picked the contractor, they've given him a date within a window of time, but it's July.
Okay.
So, no work is taken.
With, with that information, I, I really would feel more comfortable, because this, if, 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 this is a safety issue, so why would we talk about us coming up with sort of an answer to this if the state, with, from my point, I understand that the town has expanded their interactions on driveways to include all roads, but 111 is a state road, and that, and that permit is predicated on safety, that, we, we say they only care about the access point. That's right, they only care about the access point, but their primary response to an access point is safety. So, if they're, if they really are saying on all the frontage that that guy has, this is the safest point, the town's gonna look awed saying it should be somewhere else. I'm not saying you can't still say that, but it's going to be awed to say that we think it needs to be someplace else if DOT says that's the safest spot. I bet I'm gonna talk to DOT, and they're going to say, they said it's a safe spot, and they're saying that because it's been there forever and there hasn't been an accident here. But if that's what they're saying, if they say it's a safe spot, but they're not saying it's the safest spot, then the town should do whatever the town feels is in the best interest of the road. But I really don't want us to end up in a situation where, if this did for some godforsaken reason go to court, and DOT really did imply on this and say that this is the safest spot for this driveway, and we turn around and said, eh, we don't care, it's not a safety issue to us, it's our regulation about it not impacting a property now.
What you're saying is true, if we're gonna say move the driveway, if we're gonna say leave it where it is, then we're fine? I mean, if it's only 10 or 15 feet, then it's within 20 feet?
But my, if, if, if this is not a safety issue, then I think in our regulation addresses it perfectly. It says, if you're going to do a new driveway or reconstruct an existing driveway, these, what follows is our regulations. In our regulations, say, maintain a 20-foot setback.
But they can be waived.
They can be, well, they can be.
My, my reaction to it would be to go look at it and see what 20 feet does to the driveway and see how it alters the sightline. I mean, like Mill Road one, I would've looked at, and it was close to the curb, so moving it, that 10 feet that he wanted to move it made a big difference.
Yeah.
And in a situation like this, Glenn, if, was this something where you'd be able to contact DOT, or do we put the...
Yeah, I could call, I could talk to Division 6.
And I guess, in the meantime, any of us have the opportunity to drive by and take a look at it until the next meeting, and then if we, if, you know, I just, I, I'm not positive DOT is gonna give us that definitive, yes, that's the safest.
I have the person's name.
Okay.
So, I can get that to them.
So, I mean, if they tell, if they tell us that that is the safest location for it, I think that makes the decision, to keep the town safe, it makes it much easier, but I think that if we all have an opportunity to at least drive by it in our own time and take a look, then, then, and they say, hey, yeah, it's a safe spot, but, you know, this whole section is safe.
He's not doing it till July, we got time.
That was one of my concerns, if we were talking about a situation where the damage has already been done, and time is of the essence to finish a job, to make it actually a safe circumstance, then we're really up against it.
Their life planning is not by emergency.
Well, that, that's true, but that's seen in this case, he's, he has been working on this well in advance of having something done. So, it, so that's, that, so really, I have one concern, no, I have two concerns still. Don't, don't get too worried, from my perspective, about non-conforming, if what it is is a safety issue, because in court, the safety issue's gonna win every single time. And secondly, we, humans hear what they want to hear. So, DOT said this entire area is safe, the property owner heard this is the safest area on your entire lot, and I, I think that's something we can actually shed light on.
So, is the consensus of the Board, is the Board comfortable having either Glenn or Ellen reach out to that point of contact with DOT, and we can continue to sit at the next meeting, and that'll still give the applicant time to make any, make any changes if...
In the meantime, the applicant auto-director's drawing, because it's wrong.
Drawing.
It is, it is an awkward sketch.
Awkward, and it shows it going into the driveway this way, and it goes into driveway around that way.
Because we're, from my perspective, we're pretty clear that if, if we want to take control of this situation, our order allows us to do that.
I'll make a motion to table this until the next meeting, given time for one of the two office people to talk to DOT.
Contact DOT.
And for, for Board Members to have a chance to visually look at the driveway.
Still second.
Any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Notes?
Yes. That was Richard and Robin, right?
Yep.
Just a quick question on the, on the packet, is, is the official driveway permit on file probably down in there? down there, is that so open, it would be there?
Hopefully not, that would be a state permit back then, you didn't do.
Oh, that's okay, yeah, yeah.
So.
It would've been roughly nineteen eighty-three or eighty-four.
So there, there wouldn't have been a town permit?
Right, yeah.
I'd have to look again to see if there was a state one.
So we have a few items in here, these are invoices, uh, we have them for civil management construction, so these are just invoices for different projects. We don't have any issues with any of these, ones for Hawks Ridge, ones for Abin LLC, and Subuski ADU, and Charm Sciences. Yeah. Can I take a pen, then?
Who was the Charm Sciences one?
That's the one where they're looking to, uh, yeah.
We had a, we had.
Three hundred. Yeah, review of the site plans, yeah.
Last interview septic.
And they, and they decided not to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we, the board received an invitation for the tenth birthday celebration of the Kingston Community Library. Uh, they already did one event on Saturday, May fourteenth, they did a touch truck event over there, uh, which was very busy. On Friday, May twentieth, this Friday, they have karaoke at seven PM at the library, and a movie at the Kingston Library. Then on Saturday, May twenty-second, uh, they have plant sales, Raffle. May twenty-first. Uh, they're selling food, it looks like barbecue with Richard Wilson. Tribute band, kids' activities going on, starting at nine AM through one PM, so, uh, the board did receive a formal invitation for that.
Boss said their duck boats were the most popular.
It was, we must, my daughter, I think, gave out two hundred and fifty rubber ducks from all the kids that went up. Uh, so this one, this was from the zoning board of adjustment, uh, from the Chair, Peter Coffin. Uh, this is an update on the motion for the rehearing of the Diamond Oaks Golf Club. This is, uh, just an aware to make us feel that they denied the, denied the motion for the rehearing, uh, there's an explanation there, everyone should have received that. This is just, uh, for information to the board. We have, Dave's Repair is looking to go into one thirty-eight Main Street, Kingston, New Hampshire. To whom it may concern, I am looking to replace the business formerly known as Savanelli's Auto Repair, one thirty-eight Main Street, Kingston, New Hampshire, with Dave's Repair. Dave's Repair will do auto and light truck repairs, hours of operation will be eight AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday, with Saturday as being appointment only. Closed eleven thirty AM to twelve thirty PM for lunch. The number of employees will be two. Trash will go in the dumpster out back of the building. Waste oil will be disposed in the two hundred and seventy-five gallon tank attached to the building, which is donated to the town of Kingston. Please send all correspondence to Dave's Repair, twelve New Boston Road, Kingston, New Hampshire. Signed, Dave Drew, proprietor, uh, as well as Roger Young, business partner.
So actually no change in operations except, you know?
Are the hours consistent with what has been approved permit?
I didn't, I didn't know if they were still, I know nothing about this business, so I didn't know if they were.
It seems, yeah, it's where the Parks Oil Building is, I mean, it's been running as an auto repair shop for, I don't.
Yeah, three or four years.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, more than that.
Well, I mean, yeah, just most recently, but that, yeah, previous.
Before, before the owner that's going out now, operated, there was somebody else before that.
Yeah, right, yeah, it was A-one Auto Repair prior to that.
It's eight to five, so where it was eight to five, I, I have to tell you, I, I didn't bother looking anything up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's anything inconsistent.
What about, what about that, what about that Saturday? Then maybe you're gonna say anything, that, you're up till five o'clock on a Saturday? I mean, I don't care, I don't care.
It says Saturday's being by appointment only, so I suppose we could put in, uh, nothing past just the time.
Nothing past the hours of eight and five, you know, the, the eight and five hours.
Yep.
But I don't think that's inconsistent with the activity we've been seeing on the site.
Something that, if the board wants to, you could clarify that, that Saturdays have to also in.
Yeah, you should clarify the hours that had before that.
Five, five, five hours, not to, you know.
Is the board, is the board comfortable if we just say, you know, no, nothing further needed, but just, uh, with the Saturday hours, make sure they conform to the eight to, eight to five, don't go past the eight to five.
The only other thing to add, Chris, would be, um, clearance from historic district mission.
Okay.
Do they want to, like, business?
Say what?
Do they need that when it's the same business? Business for business?
The, HDC is gonna wanna know where vehicles are gonna be parked, if it's gonna change the look and feel of the place, uh, is signage gonna be changed, is it gonna stay consistent? When, you know, all that stuff that they look at, so.
And I have, I've given them Susan Prescott's phone number, told them they have to contact the HDC. If for no other reason, then they're gonna need it for sign. And by contacting the chairman, she'll be able to tell them what they need to apply for. I didn't take upon myself to make any assumptions, so.
So I don't think we need to hold up our decision, but I think that it's important that we make sure that we're aware that they need HDC clearance, that's all, FYI for us.
Okay, we don't, we don't need a vote on that, board.
Well, I have no further review required, Saturday hours not to exceed eight to five PM, and need to go to HDC for approval. Do you need that as a motion plan, or?
Yeah, if the minutes reflect.
Sounds good. Perfect.
Another item we have is just, uh, this is the bond reduction, uh, it's been signed off by the, uh, Select Board. Uh, this is involving Mr. Pellegrino and the Solar Hills Estates Phase Two Bond Reduction, this already came before us, uh, when Dennis, uh, did the calculations for that, so, just letting everyone know it's been signed off on by the Select Board.
I think he's already picked up the check.
Then it's definitely just an FYI. Uh, so, the next thing we have on here, uh, is Dan Park's Construction, Seven Smallpox Road. Uh, this is more, this is being handled by the Board of Selectmen, correct? So, we have, we, I believe we had already, I'll see, a bunch of the, yeah.
He was in last night, and we told him that we needed DES approval to at least know that he's proceeding with fixing all the issues, and he sent us a copy of the letter today that he sent DES. So hopefully DES will respond some day in the near future.
So this is all just supporting information to let us know the Board of Selectmen, if anyone wants to take a look at it. Uh, this part right here, we're gonna send some copies around, this is part of the, uh, application, uh, for subdivision regulations, the Board of Selectmen has asked that we, our site plan, right? Yeah. Rich, do you wanna discuss this? This is, uh, something that the Select Board had asked to be placed on there.
Well, this is one, uh, the Board of Selectmen came to us and asked us to put in some sort of information about permits and things.
I mean, what's happening if you go out and enforce things like occupancy, and the people are saying the last, the last thing I ask the planning board is, do I need to do anything else? And they said, no. And they mean, for business. Well, the people are taking that as anything else. So I said, we need to print something that you're signing or whatever to say, yes, I'm aware of the occupancy permit, permits for anything I do about that.
So this would just be adding paragraph nine, they had highlighted there, to the acknowledgement section of the application, uh, but we need board approval to make any changes to that application, so, uh, if the board has an opportunity to look at this and they feel comfortable, we, I think it'd be appropriate for us to have a motion to add this.
Can I just say one thing?
Yep.
This, you'll be voting on, but I'm just gonna add, I'm writing notices of decisions for things now, I'm just going to add this at the bottom of every notice of decision, below the signature of the chairperson, that just, so that, because they all want their notice of decision, so they'll have it, and it will say this very clearly. Um, and I'm just gonna use the exact same language, so that everywhere they look, they're seeing the same language, saying the same thing about what goes on after the planning board has said yes. So they can't continue to say stuff about non-own.
Yeah, the board asked us to add something, but we have this whole section that's acknowledgement. It's like, rather than add an extra page, if you just add it here, they have to sign on several things that they're acknowledging that they're aware of, and I thought this would be the appropriate place to put it.
So this will be, this will be.
Like a frame binder.
They'll get the decision at the, at the back end, so they'll get it there.
So, so this, so this would just be, I mean, it, it's redundancy, but I think it's probably good redundancy. Um, and so, one page is for subdivision, one page is for cycling.
Correct, correct.
And this is changing our.
It's part of the application package.
Part of the application, it's not in our, it's not a regulation.
No, but I can't just be adding language to the application, but I feel like it, so.
Then I'll make a motion that we authorize the addition of the additional wording that's just been proposed to us, um, for site plan and for subdivision applications.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? No? Extension?
Richard.
Uh, we also have an item for Smallpox Realty, I think this is just our last accumulation of fees, I believe this came from Glenn Greenwood, uh, there's amounts totaling three hundred and thirty-five dollars there, so, just, I just need to initial this one correctly.
Yeah, it's the next page.
The next page, we have to do the calculation.
Yeah, because what that is, is that's, that'll be taken out of there.
Correct. Uh, and then, so on the second page, we just need to agree to release the balance of the, uh, bond minus those fees that have been incurred, so.
That money doesn't come to me, that just goes right back to the town.
Correct.
Just to, to cover the costs of.
So, I don't know what that, we don't have the originals there, okay.
Yeah, that just goes to Cindy, so she keeps it from.
Yeah. One of the final items we have is a request to purchase, Ellen put this together, she's just looking for supply, supplies, she'd like to put a dry erase board, uh, in the office, there's some markers, cleaners, and some rulers, I guess she, uh, the goal is to put up a dry erase board that can talk about the, you know, display the pending applications, uh, property files, so it's kinda just like a board to track stuff that's going on, so anyone that comes in can see, these are the things and these are the timelines that the planning board's looking on. So we got supplies totaling, uh, sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents, uh, out of the budgeted two hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents. So unless anyone has any objections, I'll authorize that.
Do it. Make it so.
Thank you.
Uh, did we have meeting minutes from the nineteenth that we had there?
Yeah. Chris, where do you find the rubber ducks?
Amazon. As much as I hate buying from my company.
I look more for Apple, Ellen.
Uh, so, yeah, we have the, uh, Kingston Planning Board meeting minutes dated April nineteenth to twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You can see the rubber. Any discussion, any amendments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension? I wasn't there.
Okay, so you abstained two?
Yeah, two of us abstained.
Got the ninth?
Nineteenth. So this one's good. Uh, any other board business? You was first.
I need the board to go into, um, non-public session to discuss the legal action.
Okay, well, you'll last, then.
I'm sorry?
You'll last.
Yeah.
You are last, L-A-S-T.
Oh, okay.
Uh, if you can just, can we just figure out what, uh, do we know a paragraph we're gonna have to cite in that? If you look that up.
Uh, Glenn, you probably shouldn't let off my question, is there any update on fifteen New Boston Road?
Fifteen New Boston Road?
That's the place operating the big mechanic shop and everything without any permits, or, he said he's been in to talk to you.
Do you have a name?
Smallpox Road, when you turn down Smallpox immediately on the left, the address is actually fifteen New Boston Road.
Oh, is he doing auto repair? Yeah, I told him that he couldn't do any auto repair until he had a site plan review.
Has he done anything towards the site plan?
He is, he has not applied for site plan.
Okay.
No. And I spoke with him, probably.
At least a month ago.
It's been a month.
Okay.
And if I feel comfortable saying it's been a month?
Well, it's on the whiteboard, it's on the exact date, so.
Okay. Um, actually, we do have one more thing, uh, to discuss, and that's just, Ellen wanted, thought we should bring it up, I, everyone got an email about the, uh, regional impact, uh, commissioner committee that came out of Plastow, did anyone have an opportunity to read through that?
It's like, mostly it's the Accra Protective District, they, they didn't mention, the RPC letter did not mention the fact that it, uh, it busts the little river, um, but it does. It was then closed right off that road and then crossed up to, in, across one minute five, and it, and, uh, goes around that field. So, uh, but it does affect our, our water, um, supply, and, boss, Kingston has a well on Kingston side of the line, near Rockford, so.
Okay.
It does, has to give any impact on us.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I know it was, I didn't get a chance there, I didn't get the chance to watch the, because they, you can, you can go back and watch the meeting. But yeah, they, they definitely came up the proximity to borders, um, I know they've, they've been doing a bunch of the traffic studies and traffic impacts as well. Um, is there anything that? Is there anything that we need, I mean, is this just something we need to have, be aware of to start getting, do we need to have more involvement in this, or is this something that we need to bring up any issues right now?
I didn't have time to talk with the planning board about this, but I did have some concerns, so I sent them concerns on my professional letterhead, but I did say in the memo that I was the Kingston Town Planner, but hadn't vetted any of my comments with, with the planning board, so I didn't want them to think that they were from the planning board. Um, and I just wanted to go on record as saying that I couldn't find some information, like a hydrogeologic study. Did they address that? Is there one?
So, so just, so everyone knows, again, full transparency here, um, I'm one of your commissioners along with Peter Coffin to the RPC. Um, I happen to chair the Development of Regional Impact Committee, so I chair that here.
Oh, well.
So, um, you read Glenn's letter into the record, and he, as he said, he explained that since he hadn't had a chance to run by this board, he was doing it from his perspective. But by the declaration that it's potentially regional impact, it gives the planning commission a butter status and also, um, the neighboring communities, and so we were notified, uh, as a result. The, uh, I actually brought up the issue of the hydro study myself, and then, you know, you talked about it, Glenn. Uh, and I believe that, well, you know, my memory's not that good now, this is what, a whole week ago now?
Not even quite, right?
Oh, my God. Uh, I questioned it because apparently Plastow's regulations are similar to Kingston's in that, uh, if the gallons per day exceeds twenty-four hundred on the septic, uh, it requires hydrogeologic study, and they claim, they, the developer claims that they are gonna be at or below the twenty-four hundred, and so, it doesn't, in their mind, it does not trigger, uh, the hydrogeologic study. I think that if we think as a board that, since they, I don't, at least in the, in the regional impact meeting, uh, there wasn't a lot of discussion about the site plan itself, because that's not the purpose of the regional impact meeting, and I didn't hear enough definitive information to feel comfortable that in fact they're at the state level, twenty-four hundred level. And I think that if we as board have that concern that it might exceed that, um, we ought to be saying something about that and strongly suggesting, uh, that. that perhaps hydrogeologic, geologic study is conducted.
So did the developer provide any calculations of how they came up with that number? Or they just said, no, we're totally gonna move along?
They, they didn't. And, and that level of detail typically doesn't come up with the regional impact.
They, they, they put online in the Dropbox an enormous amount of information. And I weeded through that for about an hour and a half. And all I could find about septic was that they were going to use an existing septic system. Not designed for what they're saying this could have, because they're, they, so they don't, they, they say they need an existing septic system and they give no information on it. But they do say that they're planning for parking for 450 vehicles. 450 vehicles a day on the site means they need septic for 30,000 gallons a day, not 2,400. 30,000, what do you think we're doing? They're, they're saying a fulfillment center.
It's, it's a different.
Well, no, no, actually not.
Trailers and stuff, it's.
Well, one of the, one of the application materials in the, what is this, says fulfillment center.
Okay, it's, 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 it goes back to that same discussion we had with our warehouse, except that this one is a bit smaller, but nonetheless, it's a high, they call it a high cube warehouse, but it's, it's not fulfillment to individuals, so it's not the small vans running around. It's the tractor trailers, like we will be having at, at 266 125. So if that, if that's what you're saying is a fulfillment center, then.
Well, that's, that's interesting, because I mean, the only place I saw that was in one line of the application details.
They, they clearly said that it's not that.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, that, that makes me feel better. What doesn't make me feel better is planning for 400 cars. Because the DES per person septic level for, for, on a per person basis, is 75 gallons a person a day. And that's way higher. That's 10 times the threshold that would require the hydrogeologic study. So they can explain away the 450 vehicles. That's fine, if they can manage to do that. But 300, it's, it's in excess of 300 square feet and they expect a lot of people to be there. And their traffic generation report expects a lot of people to be going in and out of the site. I don't know how they can, they're telling people they can't go to the bathroom? They would have to be in order to keep it below 2,400 gallons a day. They would literally have to tell people, we don't have bathrooms.
What's our, what's our timeline for voicing that type of concern?
Well, the planning commission, the regional impact meeting has already taken place. The planning commission has already issued this letter to Plasto. But because we have a butter status as, as the declaration of regional impact, we can provide information directly to the Plasto Planning Board. And I would, I would do that, and I would suggest we copy the RPC.
I think their meeting is Thursday this week, though.
Oh, that I don't know.
So I guess with, with the board, does the board have any issues with us essentially now vetting Glenn's concerns? That he can formalize them to indicate that those concerns about the septic load, we don't believe that they can meet that threshold that wouldn't require hydrogeological.
Yeah, did they give them any numbers as far as people or cars?
Not that I can find. Not that I can find.
Some doesn't seem right there.
Like you said, if 40 people use the bathroom based on the DES, they're gonna, you know.
Well, the 75 gallons, that's high.
It is. That's, that's, that's one person, one person total. It's 45 times a day.
Yeah.
And you better be on the darn.
It's basically 800 flushes a day.
Forty, yeah, but 45 times a person is 75 gallons.
Yeah, but they're assuming more than flushing. They're assuming also you, having your lunch and using it to clean.
That's still too high, but. I'd be curious like how many employees, how many people.
So the other, the other comments I had in my letter was I couldn't find any definitive explanation of what their water draw, what their potential well is going to draw for. So that was just a question. I just said, what is the water draw? And the final thing was I commented on the fact that RPC commented on the fact that because it's so close to the Kingston Town Line, there's the possibility that emergency, mutual emergency aid agreements would say that the town, Kingston, might be required to go to some of the emergencies that happen on site. And shouldn't the Board of Selectmen be told about that? And so I thanked them for having that suggestion and said that I would let the Board of Selectmen know that this development was taking place. So those are my comments. And if, if the board is comfortable with those, I could just repackage them on letterhead and make sure that they're in, in.
They're all legitimate concerns.
Yeah, I think so.
So.
I'll get that.
Any further discussion? A motion on the table? All in favor? unanimous?
But again, I'm almost positive that their first meeting is this week.
I think you, I think you're very, I think you're trying to say it.
So they have it for the meeting?
Did anyone else lose access to the Dropbox or just they? I can't access it. Says my access is been restricted.
Why?
Or been removed.
What's the date on that email?
Yeah, I was able to, I accessed it probably three or four times over a couple of days and never had any problems.
I just tried again tonight.
Did you use the RPC link?
The one that's embedded in the email?
From the RPC?
Yeah.
Okay.
It says the link has been removed.
The town site, and you can try and do it from there.
Okay.
Didn't I send you an email that?
That's where it is. That it says, but the link has been removed. Sorry, access to this document has been removed. Please contact the person who shared it with you. Ellen?
Are you contacting me?
Oh, they did, because it's so big, they didn't wanna have it cluttering up their Dropbox. Now that they've already sent the letter.
Yeah, but you're supposed to be able to access it.
Well, I'm sure if it's in a Dropbox with town, that the town hasn't.
Gotcha.
Discontinued. I'm, I'm just sending the RPC.
I think I have other information. If I don't, I'll contact this secretary. We know each other and ask her to send me whatever.
But you said it's on the Plasto page?
I would, I would imagine that that's where it is.
I was pretty sure Dee told me it was gonna be on their, on their page.
I don't think so.
You owe me two. No, I think I got the numbers here.
Oh, yeah.
Non-public session.
Don't go into non-public yet. I have to ask you a question.
Okay.
You don't have anything on your agenda next week? On June 7th, there's nothing on your agenda. And June 21st, you just have Hawx Ridge.
Close your door, no meeting.
Second.
You have something to do?
I'm assuming you mean June 7th.
Discuss, yeah, over discussion?
As I told you today, there's gonna be a certain somebody that's gonna want to try to get a refund on their escrow account.
They have to do the work first and Dennis has to review it.
I know, but it'll be done by then.
Oh, by the 7th, can you?
Yeah, you're delaying somebody by not having a meeting. I mean, I don't care, but I just wanna make sure.
Is that something you could do through email?
Well, actually, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
But do, does the board, if Dennis is, if Dennis is finalizing, is. Do we always vote to release it, or do we let Dennis sit?
Yeah, I think you always vote to let.
What we usually do is we have the town engineer sign it, all the selectmen have to sign it, and we have the planning board chair sign it.
So I think as long as, as long as the planning board chair is available to come and sign it, so. If Glenn is still on, I can come and sign it.
If he follows through, then I'll get hold of Lynn and Dennis and do all that.
Yes, I can do that.
Robin, okay.
I just was gonna assume.
Any more further discussion? All in favor? Any notes? Extensions?
Now?
Now.
Now.
Motion to go on into non-public session for RSA 91-8, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, as needed for legal issue. That's right. That's what we always use.
Is that what you thought it was, Glenn?
No.
Would you look?
No, I think it's.
It's, it's L. It's. Consideration of legal device.
Roman numeral, yeah, Roman numeral 2 is section L.
Yes, correct.
So is it 91832L?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
So it's Richard Wilson, Chris Bashaw. Glenn Kocelman?
Yes.
Steve Patfield?
Yes.
Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Peter Baiki?
Yes.
Robin Tugway?
Yes.
Okay, that was unanimous.
All right, we are going into non-public.